Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I will call this Bloomington City Council meeting to order. Tonight is Monday, May nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Welcome to everyone who has joined us here in the council chambers. Welcome to everyone who is watching online. We will start as we always do. If you are able, please stand, remove any covering, and please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Once again, thanks to everybody joining us this evening. First order of business tonight, council, is the approval of the agenda. And under our introductory items, number two, we will, we have one new employee introduction. That's from in our Public Works Department, I believe. And then our item two point two is introduction of new firefighters. And we've got sixteen new firefighters here to introduce this evening. I'm looking forward to it.
Seventeen.
Seventeen. I had it right the first time, and I doubted myself.
You just made somebody really nervous.
And then we have a proclamation for Public Works Week. And I hope, I hope everybody had a chance to join us at the Public Works Open House because it was a fantastic time on Saturday. Our consent business is sixteen items long. Councilmember Rebus has our consent business this evening. Under hearings, resolutions, and ordinances, we have three public hearings tonight. Item, or excuse me, we have three on the calendar, and we'll be having two. Item four point one is a public hearing. It's an ordinance rem, amending chapter twenty of the city code and the fee schedule, Appendix A. Item four point two was scheduled, and it made it onto the calendar. But it was a public hearing regarding our franchise fees, and that has been canceled for this evening, council. So we're taking that off of the, off of the agenda. We've got more work to do on that, bottom line. And but just to let you know, because I know it was on the, it was on the agenda, and it was published. But we are, we have canceled item four point two this evening. And item four point three tonight is a, our third and final public hearing. It's a phase one, missing middle housing ordinance discussion. We will move on to our organizational business. Item five point one, our discussion about the sidewalk snowplow reduction proposal that we've been working on here as a city. And we'll wrap up, as we always do, item five point two is our city council policy and issue update. Council, any corrections or additions for tonight's agenda? Hearing none, I will move tonight's agenda as stated. Motion on a council member, a second by councilmember Mua to accept tonight's agenda as stated. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. We have an agenda, and it's an opportunity to point out councilmember Dalisandro is not with us this evening. So we have a six zero vote there. First item, item two point one, an introduction of our new employee. Brian Greedle is here. Good evening, sir, and welcome.
Good evening, mayor and council. Tonight, I'm here to introduce Rena Weiss to you. Rena is our new water resources engineer in Public Works Engineering. She comes to us with over ten years of water resource experience, working with watershed compliance, flood planning, and other stormwater management. So in Rena's role, she'll be helping lead, excuse me, helping lead the planning and maintenance of stormwater infrastructure, as well as helping us meet our regulatory sustainability and other stormwater management goals. Rena?
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, thank you for having me. My engineering and public works journey actually started ten years ago when I interned with Bloomington's Water Resources Engineering Team. And ten years later, I am really excited to have joined the team full time, and I look forward to serving the community here in Bloomington through our work with infrastructure, water quality, and resiliency. Thank you for having me.
Well, thank you. And how cool is that, after an internship, and then a decade, and then you're back again? So we're very happy to have you. So welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Glad to have you. Council, item two point two on our agenda is the introduction of, I don't know, a dozen, twenty some odd firefighters. I'm not sure how many. Seventeen new firefighters. Our chief, Uli Seal, is here to kick us off and do the introductions. Good evening, chief, welcome.
Mr. Mayor, council members. First, I would like to thank the council for the support that we've had in this really monumental change that we've been making in our fire department and our fire service response. And I want to assure you that it's, it's working. Saturday, they had a working fire right across the street from Fire Station Four, and so we had a very quick response, although it was a significant fire. I'd also be remiss in not mentioning or thanking my command staff. Specifically, I want to call out Chief Kaiser, who has been in charge of this academy for these, and training of these firefighters. Give him a wave, let him know who you are. There you go. And the whole command staff has participated in that, but he's been really instrumental in the training. So they've been through seven weeks. This is their eighth week. They're really looking forward to Friday because that'll be their last day of training, and they'll start on shift the following week. And they're not going to give you as much biographical information as you probably get because there are seventeen of them, and you're not going to remember anyway. But you can follow along. We did sit them, seat them in the same order that they're, they're listed, so you can follow along in the list if you like. And at the conclusion, we'll, we'll get out of your hair. So with that.
Good evening. My name's Austin Bow. I'm a firefighter paramedic. I previously came from Woodbury Fire Department. I'm super excited and very grateful to have the opportunity to serve this community.
Welcome aboard.
Good evening, I'm Farley Burke. I'm a firefighter EMT originally from Hallsville, Missouri. So I moved up here in March of this year, and I'm just very happy to be here. Thank you.
Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Sam Butterfield. I'm a firefighter paramedic. I've been with the city of Bloomington for seventeen years, part time, and coming from Burnsville, Royceville, for eight years. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Thanks for being here.
I'm Adam Gennert, coming from, working at St. Paul. Pretty excited to be here, looking forward to it. Thank you for having us.
Excited to have you, welcome.
Good evening. Travis Helstern, come from Rice Lake, Wisconsin. I'm a firefighter EMT. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thanks for being here tonight.
Good evening. My name is Cameron Huntington. I'm a firefighter EMT, and I'm previously coming from the city of Vegan. Happy to be here.
Welcome.
Evening, council. I'm Michael Jabs. I'm a firefighter EMT coming from the city of Prior Lake. Appreciate your guys' support. Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Good evening. My name's Nick Jonas. I have lived in Bloomington for about eight years. I've been on the part-time side for six. I left a fourteen-year career in IT, and I am incredibly grateful for this opportunity. Thank you.
Welcome. And really, Nick Jonas, you're not, you're not. You won't forget it now.
One of the biggest guys comes from IT, right?
Good evening. My name is Paul Ludden. I have lived in Bloomington over twenty years, served in the part-time side for seventeen. Previously, a full-time job was construction, and I'm grateful for the opportunity, and thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm Luke Miller. I've lived in Bloomington fifteen years, been on the part-time for thirteen years, and coming as a fire medic from Burnsville for eleven years.
Welcome aboard.
Hi, I'm Sierra Runderman. I'm a firefighter paramedic coming from the city of Oakley.
Welcome.
Hello, I'm William Seibel. I'm a firefighter EMT, and I'm coming from St. Joseph, Missouri. Thanks for having me.
Glad you're here.
Hello, I'm Blake. I'm coming from Burnsville. I'm a firefighter medic, and I'm very thankful for the job.
Thanks for being here, Blake.
Good evening, council. My name is Ryan Snyder. I was previously a firefighter paramedic for the city of White Bear Lake, and I'm looking forward to continuing my service with the city of Bloomington.
Glad to have you on board.
Hi, I'm Veronica Vasina. I'm firefighter EMT, and I'm originally from City of Minnetonka. Happy to be here.
Welcome.
Hi, my name is Josh Waldron. I've lived in city of Bloomington for eighteen years, firefighter, paramedic, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Valen Watson. I've lived in Bloomington for four years. I'm a firefighter EMT. I've served on the part-time side for about three and a half years. I'm super grateful for the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, mayor, council, I'm really happy to present this class to you. And they'll be, they'll be on trucks next week, so they've made it this far, that you've got another three days left on them, I think, don't you? All right, thank you very much.
Well, thank you, chief. And I want to extend the thanks to you and to the command staff for undertaking this, this enormous task to build a full-time fire department in the city of Bloomington. And you've done great work at it, and you thanked us, but what we should do is be thanking the residents of Bloomington for taking this on. We brought this forward, and I think to a person, we have heard support and acknowledgement of the need of a, of a full-time fire department, and more often than not, pushing to make it happen faster, get it done. So very glad that we're able to do that. To our, our new firefighters, first of all, everybody loves firefighters, let's face it. I mean, everybody loves a firefighter. I tell this to all of our new employees that in so many ways, you are the face of Bloomington. They really don't care who I am, or the council is, or the folks. They care about the people that they interact with. Residents care about the people that they interact with every day, and that falls on you. And that falls on you as well, Rena, where are you, out there? You as well. They, they care about the people that they interact with, and you are true representatives of this community, and the way people see you is the way they see this city. So it's a big responsibility, but it's also an expectation that I know you all will meet. Because, I mean, you're firefighters for the city of Bloomington, right? So you'll meet that. So again, congratulations to you all, welcome. Thank you all of our firefighters. Thank you to our EMTs in the back there as well. Thank you so very much. Greatly appreciated. Let's give them a round of applause and welcome. Next up on our agenda, council, is item two point three. It's a proclamation for Public Works Week, and I'm going to head down to the podium as we say goodbye to our firefighters this evening. We've got a proclamation here for Public Works Week, and I see my folks coming up here. We've got, joining me tonight, Jagger Anderson and Brandon Palmer for utilities, and Rena from engineering, and Marcus Hilgert from maintenance, joining me up here tonight as I give the proclamation. You heard me say it earlier, the, the Public Works Open House was this week, and if you had a chance to get there, I certainly hope you did because it was fantastic once again. It's a great way to show residents, the work that we do here in the city of Bloomington, the work that our largest department, I think Public Works is the largest department, isn't it? I believe so, from numbers. I think it is. It's, it's an enormous department, doing incredible work, important work. And as much as I talk to our new hires and, you know, have fun with the firefighters about them being the face of Bloomington, in so many ways, our public works folks are the face of Bloomington, whether you're out plowing or mowing, or, or any of the work that you're doing, working in the streets, people see you and they think the city of Bloomington. And so you play a very important role, and it's greatly appreciated for all the work that you do. And I'm going to read this proclamation, and then I don't know which of you drew the short strong gets to speak. But if nothing else, we'll just take a picture as well. So, boy, did you see the panic in their eyes when I said that? A proclamation for Public Works Week, May eighteenth through the twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five. Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our residents' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of a public work system and programs such as water, sewers, streets and highways, park maintenance, public buildings, solid waste collection, and snow removal. And whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services. And whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials. And whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work that they perform. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Tim Bussie, do hereby proclaim the week of May eighteenth through the twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five, as Public Works Week in the city of Bloomington, and I call upon all residents and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life dated this nineteenth day of May, two thousand and twenty-five. And that last, therefore, calling upon the residents and the civic organizations to do all these things, basically, what I'm calling on residents and our civic organizations to do is to thank the people who do the incredible work that they do every day to make Bloomington the great place that it is from a public works perspective. So who gets to speak now? Who's going to jump in?
This was not planned, but I've really enjoyed being involved in public works, seeing the great work that goes on every single day to make normal happen. That's one of my favorite phrases, is that public works makes normal happen. No one really notices it unless something's going wrong, and that goes for the field of civil engineering as well. So thanks to everyone who's out there every single day, serving the community of Bloomington.
Very well said. Thank you so very much. Can you get us all in?
Yeah. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. Got it.
Next on the agenda, council, is our consent business, item three. Councilmember Rebus has the consent business this evening. Councilmember Rebus.
Does anybody have all? Nope. I move items three point one to three point sixteen.
Motion by councilmember Rebus, second by councilmember Nelson, to accept the consent business as stated, items three point one through three six point sixteen. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. Thank you, councilmember Rebus, appreciate it. We will move on to item four, our hearings, resolutions, and ordinances. Our first hearing tonight is a public hearing, item four point one. It's an ordinance amending chapter twenty of the city code and fee schedule Appendix A. Our CFO, Lori Economy Shuler, is going to lead us through this. Good evening, Ms. Economy Shuler, welcome.
Good evening, mayor and council. In two thousand and twenty, at the end of two thousand and twenty, Appendix A was established, and during two thousand and twenty-one and through August of two thousand and twenty-two, legal worked with individual departments, depending on what area the code belonged to that department, to move all the fees that were located within the code to Appendix A. At that time, this particular one had not moved, and as we're going through and looking at the franchise fees for a possible increase sometime this year or next year, we had noticed that this one needed to be moved too. So before you is capturing all of the pieces that are in the code right now, written with numbers, and we're going to move them to Appendix A. If you approve, so.
Thank you so much. Council, any questions of Ms. Economy Shuler about this? Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, I think I'm clear on this, but just for the public, this doesn't change the fees. This just moves them. The change may or may not come later.
Mayor and councilmember Nelson, that is correct.
Thank you.
All, all the numbers are exactly what they are today.
So no fee increase, just making, moving it into Appendix A where we can then find it more easily?
Yes. It'd be more transparent to any of the residents that all of our fees are now in, that we're in the code are now in Appendix A.
Very good. Council, any additional questions? All right. Thank you, Ms. Economy Shuler. Council, this is a public hearing. I will open the public hearing on item four point one, a public hearing regarding an ordinance amending chapter twenty of the city code and fee schedule Appendix A. Is there anyone in the council chambers who wishes to speak to item four point one this evening? Caitlin, do we have anyone on the phone who wishes to speak to item four point one?
Mayor, there is no one online.
Last call for anybody in the council chambers? Council, no one coming forward in the council chambers, no one online wishing to speak to item four point one? I look for a motion to close the public hearing on item four point one tonight.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Mua, second by councilmember Loman, to close the public hearing on item four point one. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero, closing the public hearing. Council comments, questions, thoughts on item four point one? Or action on item four point one? Councilmember Mua.
Thank you, mayor, happy to do that. I move to amend chapter twenty of the city code and schedule, fee schedule Appendix A.
Second. Motion by councilmember Mua, second by councilmember Loman, to adopt the ordinance amending chapter twenty of the city code and fee schedule Appendix A. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. Councilmember Mua.
Thank you, mayor. I move to adopt a resolution directing summary publication of the ordinance amending chapter twenty of the city code and fee schedule Appendix A.
Second. Motion by councilmember Mua, second by councilmember Loman, for summary publication on item four point one. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. As I mentioned, when we adopted tonight's ordinance, we have canceled the public hearing on item four point two tonight, so we will be doing that at a future date, but there will not be a public hearing regarding the Center Point Energy and XL Energy franchise fees. So we will move on to item four point three on our public hearings, this regarding the phase one, missing middle housing ordinance. Mr. Nick Johnson from our planning staff is here. Good evening, Mr. Johnson, and welcome.
Good evening, mayor and members. Sorry, is there a clicker available? Oh, thank you. Good to see you all. We've had a few of these discussions, so thanks for welcoming me back. So just a brief agenda of the things that I will talk about. I know we've gotten into depth on some of these items, so the approach I plan to take is probably more similar to miscellaneous issues ordinance style. Provide you kind of a summary of some of these changes. If you want to go in depth on any of them, I have extra slides that I can pull up, that, pull up the specific changes on individual issues. So to provide you background on this again, so the missing middle housing study has been a project that has been on multiple years of the Planning Commission work plan. We've, we've had a few starts and stops pending potential state legislation, other pauses. But fundamentally, what this project is really about is reducing barriers to infill housing in Bloomington, trying to create more low and medium density housing types. They fill a pretty valuable portion of Bloomington's housing stock. They offer more variety. They fill a good need for seniors and other groups in Bloomington. So there's a variety of wide, there's a variety of reasons why to support these housing types and their development. And we've gone over a lot of that in our study sessions. Just to give you a snapshot of the process that we pursued thus far, the most recent round of study sessions took place in the fall and winter of twenty-four, so the Planning Commission in November, and the HRA Board. And then we were most recently in front of you in December of two thousand and twenty-four. As part of that study session discussion, we went into more depth on some changes that we were proposing to our existing use types in our zoning code, most specifically accessory dwelling units, two-family dwellings. And we're going to add in some townhouse standards that we would like you to look at this evening as well. So the purpose of those study sessions was to build consensus and support around some of these changes. I'll, I'll mention again that we still have state legislation that was being considered. I don't know the status of it as I speak right now. I probably should have looked into that, although it's a very dynamic situation down there in St. Paul. So that's always kind of lingering on the, the back end of this project. The Planning Commission did review this ordinance in April, April tenth, and they did recommend approval of the ordinance. So just to point out one thing about this project is that we have effectively broken the project into two phases. The first phase is what's before you this evening, and it's taking a look at, again, refining standards that apply to some of our existing uses and our existing code. The second phase of the project, likely to be more intensive, involves adding new use types to the Bloomington zoning code, triplexes, fourplexes, multiplexes, cluster housing. And that work is being led by Dakota Caston Day in the Planning Division. So the, the general plan there is to bring back to you in the form of a study session sometime later this summer or early fall, some of these new standards that we would propose to you in concept before going, before public hearings and looking down that path. The other point I would reiterate about the phase one piece is when we discussed this back in December. One of the reasons we broke it into two pieces with some of this lower hanging fruit in the first phase is that we wanted to try and to get some of these changes deployed into the two thousand and twenty-five construction season. And so that's our intent in bringing this before you. So yeah, I'll, I'll go over the ordinance itself now, and I'll, I'll group it by changes to particular use. So we'll go over first ADU standards, then two-family dwelling standards, and then townhouses. So the, the standards being proposed to change in the ADU, the ADU ordinance or the ADU standards of our code, the first one is just merely a cleanup item, kind of akin to what we do in miscellaneous issues. As far as setback adjustments, so at the previous study session, we recommended two potential changes to setbacks. One had to do with reducing the rear yard setback for ADUs down to fifteen feet. And so that is presented as a potential barrier to detached ADUs in certain circumstances. Applying that thirty-foot setback to them now has been prohibitive on a couple sites that we've looked at or presented a barrier. The other change has to do with larger or deeper lots, allowing ADUs closer to the front property line than a single-family dwelling. And so where that most often comes into play is if you have deeper lots with a very significant residential setback or setback to the single-family dwelling, say sixty-five feet or more, that makes it very difficult to cite a new ADU on a site that has grade on it. So think about lots on the Minnesota River, other, some of our other estate lots tend to be fairly large and have more contours or grade associated with them. So oftentimes, the most buildable pad happens to be located in front of the dwelling, which currently isn't allowed. So those are the setback adjustment piece. As far as the size and floor area, really just trying to streamline and simplify things here. Right now, Bloomington has a proportional size requirement for ADUs, and in effect, creates a two-thirds, one-third relationship, meaning the single-family dwelling of floor area establishes must be the two-thirds of your combined overall floor area. The ADU is allowed to be one-third of that. We're proposing, and we've viewed this kind of approach more, Bloomington is unique in, in this one, or a little bit more in the minority in terms of including the standard. More cities are just going towards just establishing a max size for floor area, and that's what we're proposing before you here. It's by removing this proportionate size and increasing the max size from nine sixty to one thousand, it's a nice round number. It just makes it simpler for people to plan and not have very precise architectural drawings when they're thinking about doing their project, which most people don't have on their single-family homes. The biggest piece on the changes to ADUs has to do with rental allowances. So currently, our accessory dwelling unit standards require that at least one of the two dwellings be owner occupied. And the way that it's regulated that way is that it says that only one rental license will be issued to the site. If there was two rented dwellings... If there was two rented dwellings, they would need two rental licenses. So currently, that is not allowed. There's been a lot of discussion about barriers to ADUs. We believe this is one of the potential barriers to ADUs. Most people, when they think about ADUs, think about the detached, quite costly and expensive versions. But there's a lot of ADU creation that can be done by converting spaces within existing, existing single-family homes or doing small additions. And so I think by expanding the allowance for renting both units, that, that is a way to incentivize the creation of more ADUs in Bloomington. One thing I'll note about that too is that Bloomington has a lot of experience in terms of two rented dwellings on one site. We have a lot of two-family dwellings that have two rented units. So this is something that our environmental health staff and the city clerk licensing. It's not foreign to them. They're used to it. There's two separate licenses. They would do inspections on both. It's something that's very approachable from, in terms of that program. So the same standards would apply to any rented ADU of any rented home in Bloomington. Another thing I'll say about it too, and this discussion came up at the Planning Commission, is that there's been some discussion around group homes. It's a separate issue. Group homes are a separate use in the zoning code. They're authorized under state law, under that kind of preemption. And you can't both be a group home and a two-family dwelling or an ADU. It's two completely separate things. You're either one or you're the other. So I just want to be very clear about that for the purposes of the discussion. So yeah, I'll move on to two-family dwellings. If you can hold your questions to the end, I'm happy to return to any of these, if that's okay. So yeah, getting to two-family dwellings. I think the overarching issue in terms of tweaks to our two-family dwelling standards is really trying to align more of our standards that are applicable to two-family, that are currently applicable to single-family. The, the city's comprehensive plan considers these uses appropriate for low-density residential areas. We don't think that the impacts of them are significantly different. They're very similar uses just from a zoning perspective. So getting more alignment between those standards is what's informing some of these proposed changes. I'll circle back to site size back at the end, and I won't spend a lot of time on the cleanup items. Those are just kind of more cleanups. But as far as garages go, so right now, the garage setback, and again, thinking about the element of potential conversion of an existing single-family site to a two-family dwelling, some of these things can be barriers. So currently, the garage setback in, for two-family dwellings is 10 feet, a side yard setback. In single-family, it's five feet, which we think works quite well. In addition to that, our two-family dwelling standards require garages to be attached to the dwelling. You can't have a detached garage and also have a two-family dwelling. So we're proposing to allow detached garages and allow them to be at a five-foot side yard setback, similar to single-family homes. There is a specific provision in our code that requires that two-family dwellings, when located on two, the corner lot of two local streets, it requires the garages to have driveways to two separate streets. So similar to what we'll talk, I'll, I'll talk a little bit about townhomes next, is that as long as the access locations are appropriate, as you know, reviewed by our city engineering and traffic staff, some of these standards are very prescriptive and don't align well with some designs that some developers have brought to us in terms of some of these projects. So it's just removing some of that prescriptive standards, which can, for some, some developers or some projects can serve as a barrier. Landscaping, we don't require a landscape plan and install, install plantings for single-family homes. So we do for two-family homes. It can be quite costly or labor-intensive. We have to require, collect a surety. We have to do inspections. We just think that those activities are more appropriate for larger-scale development than a two-family dwelling. Most people are going to plant vegetation and landscape materials part of the project. So getting back to site size. So site size, some of the other changes we made related to site size in terms of the reductions in side yard setbacks and those things, there was a low-hanging fruit way to create a reduction in site size, which effectively represents 10%. And so it's lowering our interior, both our interior lot and our corner lot standards by about 10%. It brings more Bloomington lots into the equation in terms of that, as far as the eligibility goes. But it's been part of the discussion too, I think, at this stage. I think we all acknowledge that our standard is still probably on the high side and could go lower. And so what I want to share with you here is that we're just going to continue to study this and look at this. The, one of the reasons that we don't want to go or want to keep the topic relevant or open is that while we study standards for triplexes, quads, these other things, we want to make sure that we're in alignment. So there might be some adjustments to our two-family site size. And the second piece of it is that we have another project on our work plan, looking at our corner lot standards. And so Bloomington effectively has two front yard setbacks for all of our corner lots. By, if we make any adjustments as part of that project, that would also inform some changes to site size, both for single-family dwellings, but also for two-family dwellings. So there's a couple of these elements, kind of Phase Two of Missing Middle, but also this corner lot project, which really we want, we don't want to get too far out ahead of that while we're studying these issues later on this year. So right now, just proposing a 10% reduction in minimum site size. Getting to townhouses, this is not a topic that we dove into significantly yet, at our December study session. The reason that we did not is that, again, with the mindset of trying to keep more of the medium-density uses to Phase Two of the project, we didn't include it as part of that initial phase. But we've actually been looking at some potential developments, and it mirrored kind of longstanding frustrations that we've heard in the development community in terms of some of the standards that we're proposing to change before you this evening, at least two of them. One of them is just a simple cleanup. It has to do with our driveway depth requirements. That's just kind of improving the readability of that provision. But then the recess garage requirement, effectively what it requires is that the garage for a townhouse be at least four feet behind the living space of the addition. Not a lot of new construction townhomes are designed that way. A lot of them are even, even, or just have a modest protrusion, not recession, with respect to the garage. We understand what the kind of good intention behind it. You're trying to limit the massing of garage doors along public frontage, so I understand that. But we think that just with some modest adjustment, it can be more amenable to a lot of the designs that we see kind of in other communities, which I think, you know, garage doors are not what they used to be too. A lot of them are much more attractive than they used to be. Garage offset requirement, what this one is, is basically when you have two townhomes next to each other, it requires that the garage doors be staggered by at least four feet. So again, it's just trying to create articulation, I think, well-intended. I understand what it's trying to do. But it has created some barriers for some folks designing townhomes or interested in building townhomes. And in addition to that, the standard actually applies no matter if it's visible to the public right of way or not, even if it's just internal to a private roadway in the development, the standard still applies. So we would recommend adjusting that as well. So just to reiterate, this project has gotten into a lot of depth that I'm not talking about this evening. We've done a lot of community engagement. We've, we've had focus groups with developers focused on infill development and low and medium-density development, that those were really helpful. We presented to Developer Collaborative, who's focused on infill development, got a lot of good feedback from them as well. We've tabled at community events. We've been doing online engagement throughout. So I would say this project more compared to others. We've, we've dove down even a little bit further on the engagement side. Planning Commission recommends approval. I'm happy to take any questions you might have or dive into deeper detail on some of these individual items if needed.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Council, questions on this? Questions of clarity here, and then we'll head to the public hearing, and then we can have our discussion after the public hearing. Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you. In, in addition to corner lots, was there any consideration of through lots and any changes that might be necessary there in terms of setbacks?
Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, no, it's not something we were thinking about. Our rear yard setback matches our front yard setback currently of 30 feet. But I think overall, and I'm not trying to, this isn't the 2026 work plan presentation, but we think we need to look at all of our structure setbacks in many of our districts. Some of them are, have some refinements that we think would be positive. But I would say this, that particularly on fencing, sometimes fencing is an issue that comes up on through lots. We have some specific provisions around that, and that's something that we were going to look at as part of the fence ordinance review.
Okay. Second question, the ADUs, you, you're recommending that we eliminate the percentage overall. How would that impact if the ADU is not, like you said, it's not the backyard or, in this case, maybe potentially, if we approve it, front yard thing? But if you, say, converted your basement, put it in a separate entry, in a separate kitchen, and created an ADU there, without the percentage, could that potentially be larger than the primary space? Or how would that work?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, it could. Then you're really getting into a discussion about what is the primary and what's the accessory dwelling in a way. But effectively, what we would be reviewing is to ensure that whatever is the ADU is 1,000 square feet or less. That's what we're looking at. And there also is a provision in there that creates a common utility area exception that would not count towards the ADU size, because if you're in the kind of scenario you're envisioning, there's typically utilities serving both dwellings.
Yeah, so if you had a standard Rambler, 1,040 square feet, utilities, take that out, your basement could be an ADU without having to do anything unusual to modify it other than making sure you had access, egress, and kitchen.
Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, that's correct.
Yeah. And then on the two-family, without the attached, so you could have a detached garage, can the detached garage be shared?
Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, it could. Right now, our parking requirement is two stalls, one per unit.
Yeah.
And so yes, it could be shared.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Council, additional questions? All right. If you could, just for me, Mr. Johnson, again, clarify one more time, the work that we're doing here as opposed to, or what we're talking about here as opposed to group homes and, and the requirements around that.
Yeah, Mayor, I know it's been a topic of interest lately and maybe the last few years. The state law allows, requires cities to allow residential care facilities serving sick people or fewer in all their lower-density residential districts. So as long as you're licensed by the state, you're allowed to establish a residential care facility. These typically are assisted living or providing other type of care, and they are very important in terms of serving residents and the community. But I think there's somewhat of a conflation around just typical rental housing, just if a home is being rented. And so it's easy to confuse these two different things. One of the things that the environmental health staff has talked about is that they used to require a rental license for also residential care facilities. There were some changes in state law that precludes the city from doing that now. And there was some discussion at the state level around reinstating that. I think I'm safe to say that the environmental health staff would strongly support that because they value the inspection, just to ensure that all, any of all issues through a city eyes, through a city lens are being addressed as well.
Very good. Thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Yep.
Also, any additional questions? All right, do not go far. Mr. Johnson? This is a public hearing, and I will open the public hearing for item 4.3. This is regarding our Phase One Missing Middle Housing Ordinance. Is there anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak to item 4.3 this evening? No one coming forward? Caitlin, is there anyone on phone, on the phone?
Mayor, there's no one online.
Last call for anybody in the council chambers? Item 4.3? Also, no one coming forward in the chambers, no one on the phone to speak to item 4.3? I would look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 4.3.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember Rivas, closing the public hearing on item 4.3. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. So council, discussion on item 4.3? I, I do want to say, Mr. Johnson, I appreciate the presentation. And what I really appreciate, I think it was about your third or fourth slide, showing the graphic about the background on the Missing Middle Housing. I think so many times, I, I think there's confusion when we talk about what we mean by the Missing Middle. And to see the, the, the graphic, talking about ADUs, two-family dwellings, townhomes, but also triplexes, fourplexes, multiplexes, all these different possibilities as ways to address the housing shortage, and frankly, as a, an affordable way to live or a way that a homeowner can reduce their, reduce their monthly payment every month by taking on a rent. I mean, there's so many different ways that this all works very well together. But the graphic that, I don't know if it was our, our graphic or we borrowed that from somewhere, but it's, it's a good graphic, and I think it's the best that I've seen kind of explaining all of this and kind of showing it a little bit more graphically, if you will. So thank you for that. Council, comments on this? Councilmember Lohman?
Well, Mayor, I think you stated it well. I, you know, just for you, with the, where our city is today and what we've tried to do with ADUs, and we weren't successful with our first pitch when we tried to do it. Now hopefully, this, you know, kind of moved the ball a little bit further down the line. And as we try to mature our city more and having these additional options, I think are going to be a wonderful thing for the populace and for those folks that say, hey, you know, I'd like more options to do something with my, my property. Now, well, here's our response, that you're able to do some more things to make your life a little bit better, and it kind of opens up more opportunities as opposed to some of the other things that we were looking at. So while I'm a little bit skeptical about the, the rental portion of it, because I, I'd like to promote ownership, I, I am, I'm happy to at least try it out, you know? We can always pull it back if, if we need to do that. So I, for one, will be supporting these changes that we, we look to make here.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Really appreciate the work of staff and our Planning Commission on going through all these items. Think they've done a great job. I know this is a first stab. I do believe a housing bill was just passed and went to the governors for signature. But I don't think that's any reason for us to slow down on these. I think there'll be minor tweaks in some of the other things that we have, based on what I've seen from what, actually, I think what we received from staff earlier today and what's in that. So what I would say is, I support this because I want to see a way for younger families to be able to afford a place to live, for seniors to be able to stay in the community, and, you know, us to be able to provide that housing for them. And my only regret, and this is not on Bloomington, is I wish that more communities were doing what we're doing. And I wish frankly, the legislature would do what they need to do to make this region-wide these types of activities. And I won't say anymore on that at this point. So I, I, again, thank you to staff, Planning Commission, for being really thoughtful on these. I think, I think these are all very workable, and I think that they will definitely benefit the community in terms of providing places that, you know, people can have a place they can live, that they can own, hopefully, and, and stay in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson, and thank you for your, your comments on the need for this beyond the city of Bloomington. Absolutely agree. Other comments, council? Questions? If not, council, I will look for action on item 4.3 this evening, our Phase One Missing Middle Housing Ordinance.
I'd be happy to make that motion.
Councilmember Lohman?
Mayor, I'll move to adopt an ordinance amending various performance standards for accessory dwelling units, two-family dwellings, townhouses, thereby amending Chapter 21 of the city code.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember Carter, adopting an ordinance amending various performance standards for accessory dwelling units, two-family dwellings, and townhouses in the city of Bloomington. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. Councilmember Lohman?
Mayor, I'll move a resolution, authorize a summary publication of the ordinance, amending various performance standards applicable to accessory dwelling units, ADUs, two-family dwellings, townhouses, thereby amending Chapters 21 of the city code.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember Carter, regarding summary publication of item 4.3 this evening. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. Thank you very much. We can do that. We can definitely do that. Council, we're going to move on to our organizational business. And with your indulgence, we are actually going to flip the organizational business. Items 5.1 and 5.2, we're actually waiting on some, one person to, who's part of the presentation for item 5.1. So we're going to go to item 5.2, the City Council Policy and Issue Update to begin with, and we'll hope that person shows up. So we're going to go to item 5.2, the City Council Policy and Issue Update, doubling back to item 5.1 here in just a moment. And I will start our policy and issue update, recapping our city council listening session this evening. We had one, two, three, four, we had five speakers this evening, five different presentations, a number of different speakers actually within this. Mr. Tim Sandlin and his wife were present. Questions about, they own a property where food truck owners park on their property, and that right now, parking overnight is, is in, in violation of city ordinance. And he was asking if we could somehow deal with that and somehow make that work. Agreed to connecting with Lynn Moore and Kim Bergren and others in our, our city staff to see if we can figure out a way forward on this, or if there is a way forward, or if perhaps the, the, the city standards are in, in place for a reason, and it is a way that we're using them in such a way to keep property values and neighborhoods as they are. We had a visit from Mr. Dave Tucker, who is, I think, the head of the HOA for a 99-home complex. And he had complex, and he had concerns about our sidewalk snowplow reduction proposal, which is item 5.1 that we're going to be doubling back to here shortly, just the overall cost of it and what the impact might be on their homeowners' association. We heard from Mr. Robert Coleman and a couple of his coworkers regarding the, the unionized grocery stores in Bloomington and the work that they're doing to try and, to get to a contract agreement with the owners of the grocery stores. So Mr. Coleman was there presenting for us this evening. We heard from Mary Pat Dearing. She had her concerns also about the plowing business, or the changes, the potential changes to plowing on city sidewalks, primarily because of just the efforts and the impact it might have on some of our older residents. And finally, we heard from Mr. Brian Mitchell, and Mr. Mitchell had some concerns about the use of franchise fees in our city. Appreciate it, because once again, I mean, of our folks, other than Mr. Coleman, I think they were all discreet and new folks to come forward and speak to our listening sessions. So continued mission accomplished on that, because we wanted an opportunity to bring more people forward and to have different discussions on different topics. So thank you to everybody who showed up for our council listening sessions this evening. The only other item that I will bring forward, and I kind of touched on it a little bit, I wanted to thank and congratulate our staff, both in Public Works and in the Police Department, for the open houses that they hosted on Saturday this week. It was a little chilly. It seems like this, this, the Saturday for these open houses is either 95 degrees or it's 45 and rainy. There's nothing in between on those, on those days. And it was 45 and rainy on Saturday, and, but we had an outstanding turnout at the Public Works Open House. We had an equally good turnout at the Police Open House. And then frankly, I, because my day wasn't full enough, I went over to Valley View, and we did a proclamation for Tennis Day in Bloomington as well. So we had a full, fun day of things going on in the city of Bloomington, and I wanted to congratulate our city staff for the work that they put in to make that happen. It is a big heavy lift, I know it is, and they do great work with it, and as always, great ambassadors for the city of Bloomington. So I wanted to give them a shout out and a thanks for the work that they have done. That is all I have. Ms. Hedin, you have a couple of items?
I do, and it was a busy weekend for staff here and for our community. Yesterday, on May 18th, Parks and Recreation hosted the Indigenous Arts and Crafts Fair. It was a celebration held in partnership with the Bloomington Public Schools American Indian Education Program in honor of Minnesota's American Indian Month. The event featured more than 30 indigenous artists showcasing their work alongside hands-on activities, games, informational tables, highlighting indigenous resources and organizations. Attendees enjoyed traditional native flute and hoops, hoop dancing, performances, and food provided by indigenous food trucks. With an estimated of 1,700 people in attendance, that's amazing. The event was a big success and was a meaningful celebration of indigenous culture, creativity and community. So I want to send some gratitude to all involved, including Mark Morrison, our Parks and Rec Supervisor, who runs many events, Jay Ludwig, Coordinator here, who works with history and indigenous programs, and Claire Little, the Farmers Market Coordinator. The two Bloomington Public Schools American Indian Education Program staff who helped us were Heidi Hecker and Clarissa Seidel, who, and Clarissa is also a member of our city's Dakota Advisory Group. So kudos to the team. Sounds like it was an amazing experience. We got a few emails actually today, just thanking the city and very impressed with how the event went, and just great job to everybody, and can't wait for it to happen again next year. And then, in, in terms of exciting things happening here, we've, we say these words every once in a while, I should say, we say these acronyms, GFOA and PAFR, and that's Government Finance Officers Association and Popular Annual Finance Reporting. You can see why we say GFOA and PAFR. The city of Bloomington has been awarded the 26th GFOA Popular Annual Financial Report Award for the 2023, it's always a little behind, Corporate Report to the Community, which was published in the June 20, was published in the June 2024 briefing. The timing is perfect, as we get ready to publish the 2024 report in the June 2025 briefing. Hopefully, people can follow that. The PAFR is evaluated by judges based on reader appeal, understandability, distribution methods, creativity and other elements. We also recently received the city's 30th consecutive distinguished budget presentation award from the GFOA earlier this month. So congratulations to the team. A huge thank you to our core team of Kari Carlson, Ashley Klemmer, Jody Willard and Brianna Eckeldinger for their work in creating another outstanding report for our community. It continues to be a wonderful collaboration between our communications and finance teams. So thanks a lot, everyone. Good work.
Thank you, Ms. Hedin. Any questions on either of those two items? Very good. Counsel, if we have anything to add to our issues and updates? I'll start with Councilmember Nelson, then go to Councilmember Loman. Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I had intended to bring this up a couple of weeks ago, but we ran short on time. Just want to let my colleagues and the public know that there was a meeting with Kirk Roberts, Julie Long, Councilmember DeLisandro and myself, with Eric and Erica from Southwest Transit. As you may recall, when we met with Metro Transit, they have essentially discontinued service west of Normandale, other than one stop at St. Edward's Church on Nesbit. And shortly after that, we were all invited to a ground break, no, no ribbon cutting for a new line with Southwest Transit that was going from the Southwest Transit Center in Eden Prairie over to, I believe, the Orange Line Mall of America and Airport. And because of those, the confluence of those things, I reached out to Southwest Transit to see if they had any interest in discussions or ability for potentially serving West Bloomington in a different way than we have in the past. And so, we had a very good conversation, no firm commitments, no specific direction, but, you know, with our great staff, with Julie and Kirk there, talked about how to make sure we support their current line going through Bloomington to help people get to and from the airport, or the mall, or the Orange Line, so they can get into or out of the city. You know, one, one of the ideas was to talk about doing something similar along, along Old Shakopee and the more southern part of the city in that area, as well as other things. We talked about their existing Southwest Prime, I believe it is, that provides sort of that, for lack of a better term, probably the wrong term, micro transit, where you can get a door-to-door, that sort of thing. So anyways, just a very good conversation, starting of some dialogue with them to see if we can improve transit in the western part of our city. So just wanted to make people aware that that conversation has started, and I think all parties were interested in continuing it. So appreciate our staff's participation in that, as well as Southwest Transit's participation.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson. Thanks for the update, and thanks for your reference on that. Appreciate it. Councilmember Loman?
Yeah, and what I would, I would say is, that did come up during our 35W solutions as well, that, that, that reduction piece, and what they were looking to do is, they're really, they're doing a much longer-term planning, where they are looking at a little bit of that micro piece. You know, Bloomington's got, I think, three or four different places where that micro transit would, would occur. You know, Richfield really got impacted, from my understanding, as well from that. And so, just what they're trying to do is they're really trying to match up where the, where the demand really is, and to try to right-size it to try to figure it out, and that, that's part of the impact, as we've seen in a number, number of places with, with that low density across the western part of the city. So that does make it a little more, more complicated, but I'm glad that you guys are, are addressing it there, and it's certainly coming up. And I know we're going to have additional conversations as we kind of move forward with that, and I'd love to, you know, have more conversation offline with regard to that. I did have a couple of things, but I do see that we've got some folks that are...
Go ahead, Councilmember. Let's get, wrap up this piece, and then we'll finish up with that, the snowplow.
There's no rush? Okay. So, you might, I go. I, I don't want to just touch on a few items that are, that are in the consent agenda, that I wanted to just be sure that folks were, were aware of. 315, accepting the WIC Farmers Market Nutrition Program grant funds from the Minnesota Department of Agriculture, and I wanted to bring that, that forward, more so because my colleague here, Councilmember Nelson, had brought forward about, you know, this idea of that we're really trying to make sure that a number of these programs that are out there, that, that service those folks who are the most vulnerable in our community are, are being supported. And I think it's, you know, we, we kind of do these things kind of behind the scenes, and I just want to be sure that, that we bring that forward, so that folks see that, you know, we're doing that, you know, month in, month out, that we're, we're making these contributions, and these are, you know, these are other examples of where all these things are intertwined. And then the other item that I wanted to bring forward, there's a couple of other ones, but these are just the two I want to bring forward today, and I can certainly bring the other ones forward, is just around, you know, for a number of years, I have had served for the home visiting program, and our 311, that's on our consent agenda, is how we've reauthorized the early childhood sustained home visiting, which is MESH, with their statement of work with the Department of Health. And it's just so important in a, in a city that we have in Bloomington, that we, we, we really make sure that those folks that are, that are in those age ranges, that we just, we invest in that. And so, I'm so happy that our, our city continues to, this, this work around public health, and that we're, we're a part of that. So I, I wanted to bring those two things forward, as we, as we continue to, to take this marching down the line, and helping those folks who are the most vulnerable in our, in our community and making sure that we, we do that. And I know that this, this council has traditionally been committed to that, and I want to, hopefully we'll continue to do that as this council moves forward. So really, those are the only two things that I wanted to, to bring up.
Thank you, Councilmember. Two important programs, without question. Absolutely. Thanks for bringing those to the forefront. Counsel, anything else to bring forward for our policy and issue update? Very good. Then we will double back on our agenda, and we're going to go back to item 5.1, which is a discussion regarding the sidewalk snowplow reduction proposal that the city has been working on and talking about for a while now, it seems like, and I know has entertained a lot of engagement and discussion on this one. Dave Hansen and Kevin Nettin are here. Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for being flexible. I was running in a little late, so appreciate that.
I'm, if nothing else, I'm flexible.
And I'm glad Kevin's here, because literally, as I introduced this whole thing, Kevin has been involved in this from the start and has gathered data. He has done all the survey of other cities, so during the discussion part, I'm glad he's here to answer those detailed questions. So thanks for having us here. With me is Kevin. He's one of our plow operators. We've got Tracy Smith from CoEd in the back in a supporting role. Their office has been really important to this and the engagement plan, both externally and internally, and Renee Clark. This has been a big project, and it's overlapped a lot of different departments, and it's been a big effort that's taken many hands to get done. So, our next slide. Just simply our outline for the presentation, the goals, and you can read all that. We'll get going. But really, tonight, we're seeking feedback from you on our information, our presentation, the direction that we're looking at. We plan to take that input and come back in July, and we'll also combine it with the, the next phase of public engagement with the maps that Kevin will show you later. So these are our project goals. We want our sidewalk snowplowing to align with our other plow operations, see if we can use this change to improve park maintenance and service delivery there. Improved walkability for pedestrians is important to this, too. We want, all this is going to make things better, no matter which way we go. And we want to reduce operator injuries. We'll go into some of that with you, and then ultimately have everything in place so people can make any changes needed by this winter. So a little bit about our current practices. It takes one to three days, depending on the snow event, to finish the sidewalks in town, and that's one time through. If, if we get another snow event, we, we have to go back and start over usually, and with our other plowing operations, they're typically done in, in one to two days. To minimize the impacts from other plowing operations, we try and stagger the start time of sidewalk plowing by at least a couple hours to let street operators get out and, and get ahead of them, but it's incredibly difficult to coordinate all those moving parts. We're looking at ways to improve that, too. These operators are out there in the dark, it's a sea of white, the sidewalks are narrow, there's landscaping really close, so property damage claims are a real thing. Sod repair, we have 80, 80 requests for sod damage this year. That's actually a little bit above average, even though we had a weird snowless winter when we did have that snow event. It was the worst-case scenario where there was no snowbanks to identify the sidewalks. The ground is really soft, so if you got off the sidewalk, which sometimes is only an inch or two wider than the machine, you damaged a lot of stuff. And then staff injuries. We know that the workers' comp claims and injuries to staff are higher in this line of plowing and work than many of our other ones. So essentially, we hear from the public that it takes us too long to get the sidewalks done. When we do them, we don't do them clear enough for a variety of reasons. A lot of that has to do with operator safety. That coordination between plowing that I talked about is another thing that the public notices, you know, they're, they're, they can get messed up from other plowing after we've already done them, and then the, the damage to lawns and landscaping. From what we hear from staff is that this is a physically demanding job, and it's also mentally demanding, because nobody wants to go out and do this extra damage, and like, you want to be doing good, and so there's a problem there that we need to work on. Higher rate of injury and just kind of an overall dissatisfaction. I'll just say that literally, people keep track of how many years they expect to be on a sidewalk route. When other plow routes open, it's almost unheard of that a person plowing sidewalks does not volunteer to do that. And conversely, if a sidewalk plow route opens, nobody that's in another plow route has ever, that I'm aware of, wanted to do that. So, setting the tone a little bit. The equipment we have are the, the 10-purpose-built sidewalk machines that you see out there. We have had a variety of different brands and colors and manufacturers. Our own's a little bit bigger for doing wider sidewalks like American Boulevard. That's a real picture of Wade bouncing around in there. And then we use a single-axle dump truck, like you'd see plowing a street with that wing plow that clears off the curb sidewalks that you'd see on Nicollet or Penn Avenue, ones where there's no grass strip or any boulevard to collect the snow. So we use a truck to do that. I also want to say that this is the best equipment out there. I mean, the city has invested in the best stuff that we can find. There's, there's no problem there. And it's been modified by our own fleet mechanics, many different improvements, both in the way of operator safety and comfort, and I just dropped the podium, and, and improved results have been innovated, installed and created by our own fleet mechanics. They've won awards. I think some of them, manufacturers have picked up on those ideas when they've come out and looked at our stuff.
Consulted nationally?
Consulted nationally, yes. Yeah. So we're, we're doing everything we can. But at the end of the day, for the operator, the suspension in the seat and whatever the tires give, that's what you get to get the bumps out. I'm going to turn it over to Kevin. He's going to talk about some of the survey stuff he did.
So for the past year or so, I've been in contact with all of our surrounding cities in Twin Cities Metro, asking them how many miles they clear, how many routes they have, what's, what are their priorities, who's doing it? And one of the key determining factors in that was their route size. In the 10 to 15-mile range, they all feel successful, able to get out there, get everything cleared within one day, and then have time to even double back and clean up some areas that may have been filled back in by plow, other plow operations. So currently, as shown in the chart, we're sitting at around 25 miles still, and the only city that's even close to us is Eden Prairie at 18. Even they are saying they would, really wish they could get one more piece of equipment to help ease the burden on their operators. Our engagement efforts, been doing in-person events, virtual open houses, did the digital engagement with Leftstalk Bloomington, which is open once again with our proposal. We are asking for feedback. We went straight to the school district and engaged them to discuss with them how this would affect the walkers within our living, within our city. For staff engagement, just to kick this off, we met with Tracy, we met with the entire sidewalk crew, discussed their concerns and whatnot, and how they believed we could improve the operation. And then we also met with transportation, we met with legal... And then we also met with transportation, we met with legal, environmental health, consulted the experts on things we knew we would need to change in order to make those changes properly. And through that, some of our engagement themes were, there was a lot of support for our current operation. They really appreciate all the hard work that we put in out there. A lot of them recognize our efforts. There's some concern about resident responsibilities. Nicolet Avenue, where the sidewalk's right on the road, or Old Chocopee, where it's a lot of high traffic, very high speed for some of it. There's concern for their safety and whatnot. So, along with that, the accessibility, they're concerned about people who have wheelchairs and need to be able to get to key areas like Walgreens or something like that for their prescription drugs or something. They're concerned about property damage, too, which we're responsible for when we make, when those happen. Then the financial concerns, the taxation, they're wondering, since they consider this to be a reduction in city services, how that would affect the city budget. For the emerging usability themes, the safety of that is, they want to see the sidewalk cleared as close to bare pavement as they can, which, as Dave mentioned, we're unable to do with our current equipment. And things like dropping salt on the sidewalk aren't really feasible, because that could damage not only the sidewalk, but also environmentally, it's not the best for the surrounding grasses, and we're trying to reduce salt usage here. Accessibility was, as I spoke before, access to key areas for everybody. Usability, which doubled back to the bare pavement, and timely efficient, they want to see it done a day, maybe two days at most. So, part of the internal collaboration that's continuing even right now, just last week, Tracy met with our street department. We're consulting everybody that's part of the snowplower operation within the city to find more ideas to better improve our operation, whether that's adjusting our start time so we don't have to double back and re-clear areas that have already been cleared once, or possibly like increasing how many trucks are helping clear along the curbside sidewalk. So, we are looking at everything from top to bottom now. For our proposal, we looked into everything, and one thing that was recommended was the comprehensive transportation plan and using roadway classifications. So, when we were looking at it, we were discussing, and then it turned into everything with major collectors, we believed would be better served to be cleared by city forces. So anything major collector, arterial, expander, reliever, everything above that major collector line would be cleared by city forces, while minor collectors and local roads would be turned over to adjacent property owners. And that led us to this map, which, with a variety of different ways of where we would approach it, would bring our main fleet down to about 13 miles per route, which is right in that sweet spot that we were hoping to get, will allow us to be safer, deliver a higher quality level of service, and minimize how many miles we would have to turn back over to adjacent property owners, because we would use a variety of techniques. We would still do the curbside with a curbside truck. We would still do trails. We would still do the main key areas that were big concerns for people, Old Chocopee Road, Nicolet Avenue, Penn Avenue. So, we believe this was a good approach, or at least a good starting line.
All right, over to me. Some of the equity considerations that we took into, put in place, where we met with the school district. We wanted for sure them to know that we were looking into this and learn more about the students that walk to school. We also found out from them that they would not have capacity to do any of the additional sidewalks that were adjacent to their property, even on the low-volume roads. I forget the number of miles it was, you might remember, five miles? So for five miles, we can resume doing those adjacent to the school properties. We intend to provide supportive services list for vulnerable people. We're working on this with Tracy right now. Like Kevin said, this plan will continue to provide removal of snow on major roads where essential services exist. It'll actually improve that, and it'll put our efforts to where they may matter most, so people can get to the grocery store, transit, healthcare, things like that. And then we plan to, of course, roll out all of our materials in multiple languages. We know that any changes that come of this will need to be communicated very clearly and vigorously with the residents. For budget impacts, these are expensive machines to own and operate, so we can predict about $50,000, $60,000 worth of savings there, $11,000 in direct overtime savings that is spent on sidewalk plowing. And then if you look at opportunity costs and increased service delivery and park maintenance stuff, there's about a half FTE that if we were spending less time plowing sidewalks, we could use in parks. And then, you know, we continually evaluate our operations and services to look for efficiencies, and frankly, consider things that we may be overdoing or don't need to do as one of our processes, and we're thinking that this might be one of those things that we're over-serving. With those extra hours, we could enhance park maintenance services in the way, well, improve park maintenance, so let's talk specifically about rinks. Right now, we typically don't get our rinks cleared off until the plowing is done. These changes could help us get to those rinks the day of a snow event. I know for a variety of circumstances, Kevin himself was freed up this year to get on rinks the day of a snow event, instead of hopping into a plow, and he can tell stories, and he has, about people that were there, thinking they'd have to shovel or disappointed, and we rolled up with tractors and city equipment and were able to get those cleared off. So, provide a higher service level on rinks with natural resources. Winter is a great time to do invasive species management, tree thinning. You can throw a native seed down on the snow. All that work can be done. 925 hours would equate to over six acres of restoration done in-house every year. And then forestry. So for a lot of reasons, winter is the best time to trim trees, and we know that proactive pruning cycles lead to fewer failures and unpredicted storm damage, tree cleanups and things like that. So proactive tree pruning cycles pay for themselves in the long run, and it would allow us, this would allow us to spend more time on that. Code changes, so we realize, the code has been around since 1958-ish, I think, and it needs updating, for sure. So we're aware of that. Currently, it says the sidewalks need to be cleared by, in 12 hours. We don't even do that. So Kevin's research indicated cities look, his surveys said, you know, 24 to 48 hours. So if we look at changing ours to 24 hours, and then come up with a code enforcement strategy, depending on the approach that we head down. One thing that we've talked about quite a bit is that the first year, compliance we have better achieve through education and outreach and things like that, instead of penalties and fines and other things like that. So, our next step is we got feedback from the park commission last week. We're looking to you people for feedback and direction today. We plan to come back with all the input and make a final recommendation in July, and if authorized, then we'll do the code amendments and that kind of necessary stuff, along with the public engagement, so that folks can get whatever needs to be arranged in time for winter. And that is our last slide. So questions and discussion, feedback for us, and thank you for hearing us out.
Well, and thank you for the thoughtful work that's gone into this and for the outreach and engagement that I know you have done, because I've seen you do it. And I know that you've had plenty of folks offer opinions, and you've heard a lot of different opinions on this, and it's understandable, because it's, it's not just as simple as shoveling sidewalks. I mean, there's a lot that goes into this. I get that, and I appreciate, as I said, the thoughtful work that went into it and to come out with this proposal. The question that I have, and you mentioned it, you kind of touched on it, after you've made this presentation now, will there be additional public input opportunities? Are you going to be able, are you going to be out and about, you know, at the farmer's market, or is there going to be more Let's Talk opportunities, that kind of thing, to gain public input based on the proposals that you're making to both the park and to the city council?
So, to answer your question, yes, we will be at the First Farmer's Market in June to receive feedback in person, and the Let's Talk is live once again with the proposed route adjustment and another survey. So we were trying to encourage as many people to go and fill out that survey. Mr. Tucker, who was at the listening session, I've spoken with him already. I encouraged him to share that with his HOA. I told him, like, this isn't just us coming up with something, this is something we want to do collaboratively with the community, for the community. So, we're trying to encourage as many people as we can.
Fabulous. Thank you. Council questions? Councilmember Rivas.
I have gotten a lot of feedback of this, and I would make a suggestion. Communication, I know we do a wonderful job communicating what we intend to do as a city. However, it is kind of advanced for a lot of the folks out there, and today was a testament of that by the gentleman that spoke, that he said that he recently heard about it. I would suggest that there should be some old-fashioned flyer sent in the mail to every household, so that they can actually participate, because a lot of people miss a questionnaire on a computer. I mean, I hate those things, and I work with them daily. I hate to do them. A lot of the times, I ignore them, okay? I'm just not a big into that. I would suggest that we do much better than what we, and we do a great job, don't get me wrong, but what we do is not enough for all people out there to get the information. And that's why we get, you know, a lot of angry people at the end, when we have already voted and possibly passed things. This is very controversial. I, you know, I personally don't support it at all, for a number of things that I'm not going to get into, but communication, the simplest way of communicating, send a card out there to every resident, so that they feel that they have been informed. I know that we claim that we do a lot of information, but in reality, we don't cover everybody, because not everybody, that's what we do, or participates in what we put out there. And that's a fact. I get a lot of information from people I speak with, and a lot of them miss it because of that. Another thing that I, this is purely for safety reasons, for lack of hours, or what is the reason why this has come up anyway? Help me understand that.
Sure. Yeah. Mayor?
And actually, if you could, first, before you answer that question, can you address outreach activities that were more than just online surveys that you folks have done?
Oh, certainly. Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Rivas. Yes, we've done briefing articles. We did an earlier briefing article. We've got another one coming out. It's gone out through all those social media channels, those invites, Let's Talk Bloomington, all that. We have not done a specific mailer. We talked about certainly mailing to any residents that would be impacted by the change at some point. We haven't determined when would be the correct point to do that.
I mean, and that's exactly my point. We do all these, that I'm aware of it. I mean, if you go to Farmer's Market, how many people attend the Farmer's Market on the weekend? Any ballpark number?
I don't know that off the top of my head.
You know, that's exactly what I'm saying. Not everybody goes to those things, and a lot of the elderly people don't attend any of these events or don't pay attention to, you know, the only reason I read the information in the city's hands, like the briefing and all that, is because I'm curious to see more, to learn more myself. Basically, I make an effort to read it, but most other people, you know, gets there, it's treated like junk mail, right? So if anybody gets attention, and yes, I understand that we have to look to get more information about what concerns us, but if we put ourselves in their shoes, if information's not attractive enough to get their attention, they will not. It just will be overlooked, and then they come in here angry that they don't know anything about it, because we're not making the effort to cater to those people specifically. I mean, everything that you already named, it's, yeah, it's, we're aware of it, but, you know, not everybody has the same, I wouldn't say capability, but not everybody has the same access to everything that the city is providing. That's my point. The information is great. I agree. It's one of the best things I have seen. The information people in the city, they do an amazing job, but it doesn't get everybody out there. And sometimes we miss the most important people in these events, in these projects.
And if I could point out, Councilmember, every household in the city receives the briefing, every month.
Yeah, but...
Every month.
Mayor, to my point, I just mentioned that, yes, I understand that, but not everybody looks at it like some of us do, and that's my point. We try, we have to do better, informing the people there are less able to see what we provide. I mean, we're pretty high in technology compared to a lot of cities, and that prevents a good number of people from getting involved and getting the information that we're providing. That's my point, exactly. You know, that we're missing, most of the people that I speak to didn't know anything about this snowplow, even though we started talking about it last year, sometime mid-last year, in the summer of last year. Still, people don't, there are some people out there that don't know about it.
Okay. I believe that. And we'll get to your second question. Councilmember Carter, comment?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I mean, I appreciate what Councilmember Rivas is saying. I know when I first started in council, there were several things that came up, and then we talked about expanding mail areas and all that. And the thing I will say is that, I promise you, it would be cost prohibitive. I promise you, you would see the dollar sign and be like, oh, there's, I don't think there's any way we could do an additional mailer to every household in Bloomington. Like, I mean, I remember that was like the deal breaker in my earlier years, and I don't know if you could speak to that, if you guys have looked at that, but, I mean, I think the Bloomington briefing is the way that we get a lot of information out to every single household in written format, and it is, I think, we, every year, we hear from residents that it's their number-one, like, most appreciated source of information. And so I totally understand what you're saying, is like, it would be great if we could do a mailer to every house and, you know, really try, but from my experience being on council now for however many years, when we've had those conversations in the past, there's just no way financially we can make it work to do it on every single important issue. So, I just wanted to add that.
Now, if you could please answer my question again, what is the reason exactly that you're trying to do? Is it purely financial? Is it because of the injuries or the timing of it? I'm just curious to know that. I mean, I want everybody that is listening to hear that also. What is it exactly that motivated these plans of suspending certain areas of snowplowing?
Yeah. Mayor, Councilmember Rivas, there's a few reasons for it. We listed them all. First and foremost is pedestrian walkability. Right now, the way we're set up, it takes us three days to get through the routes, and that's one time. And we hear from the public a lot about how we don't get them done fast enough. We don't plow down to the ground, because if we hit any obstacles or things in the sidewalk, a crack, it stops the plow immediately. We've all shoveled and been pushing down the sidewalk and caught up on a joint. That stops the shovel, same thing happens in there. So, if we reduce the number of miles, there's a couple ways to look at solving this problem. Kevin already showed you in the graph that we're an outlier in the number of miles that we have per route, by almost double. So we're not delivering the service at the same level that other communities are. So there's a couple ways to solve that. One would be to add more expensive machinery and staff to operate them. The other would be to take a look at the ordinance that is on the books already, and utilize that to put some of that burden and share some of that burden with residents. So that's the option that we crafted here today on the low-volume roads, which frankly, by the time we get there on day three, many of them are already shoveled by the residents anyway. They just do them when they do their driveway. So, walkability and improved service delivery, and focusing the efforts and the resources that we do have on the busier roads where they matter most.
If I may, I'll end with this. If we could add more equipment and continue to do that, I would just lean on that. I would, that would, I would recommend that. If we're going to suspend other things that the city offers to the residents that are not in this type of services, I, basically, to me, the city provides services, police, fire, street maintenance, and I would lean on continuing to do that and suspend other amenities that the city is offering to the residents that they... And I would lean on continue to do that and suspend other, other amenities that the city is offering to the residents that they don't really want. That perhaps is a fraction of a city residents that want it. And, and you know, like as, as we, some residents stated earlier, everybody pays for it. So I would suggest that we just eliminate perhaps things that are not necessary and concentrate on, on things as this. And I, I consider this necessary for the public, for everybody's safety. A lot of people out there cannot shovel their snow anymore. And to add this, besides, it's my understanding that the sidewalks is the city property also, right? The sidewalks are owned by the city up until that line where the sidewalk ends is city property. So why are we going to put that burden on the residents? But I'll end with that. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Loman?
Thank you, Mayor. So I want to just say, my, my neighbor across the street had a big huge gash on his yard. And I was gonna mention it to city manager and we were gonna call it in. And before we were able to get at it, staff was already out there, had the seed out there, had raked the, the dirt off. I was like, wow. Didn't have to call and, I mean, the, the owner of that, you know, it's happened before, you told me that in the past. But he was so impressed with the fact that staff had gotten out there and I wanted to just pass that, that along. Because I thought that was a great example of service and excellence of service that we've come to expect from our, our snow plowing. So as I look at this, this, this whole item here, I'll be honest, I've not been a real champion of changing this at all. I know this, every year I've seen a new proposal that's come before this body to, to change this, change this over. But you know, one of the commitments that I've kind of made, kind of turning over a new leaf to challenge those things that are existing. And look at new, new paradigms and also challenge those as well. So I, I promise you that I will be focused on the goals of this, of this project. To get me from a solid note to maybe open to some of this. And I will say this was a pretty good presentation. So I wanted to just focus on these project goals that you've got here. And I've got a few other questions here and I'll try to do this relatively quickly here. But I, I see those project goals that you've got here, better alignment with the, the other snow removal operations. Improved park operations. And then I'll, I'll stop here on this one here, which is improved walkability. And what I was curious about is, you know, you see the engagement that's out there. Where they talk a little bit about accessibility. And I wanted you to, to just give a little more commentary on why not put accessibility there as opposed to walkability? Improve walkability.
Mayor, councilmember Loman? Those are different words. I think some of the meaning would be interchangeable. The accessibility as I, like ADA accessibility is kind of built into the sidewalk design.
Well, yeah, absolutely. That's kind of by law, yeah.
And it's winter and it's weather and in Minnesota, we can't always ensure that because of winter and weather. The reason we went with walkability is if we can, through a combination of property owners taking care of sidewalks. And us getting those routes down to thirteen miles that we can complete in one day, one time through. Everything will look better after one day and it'll give us chance to go back and do areas that need to be cleaned up. That's the improvement in walkability. So within a day or, or two days. We would be able to get everything done and go back and do some cleanup passes and ensure that. Well, make improvements as needed, I guess.
Thank you. That, that, that helps me have a better, better kind of, and it, it seems, it seems to me what I'm hearing you also say. Is it's that time period of, of that 24 hours is the, is what you're focused on is that the 25 miles is, you know, with the current staffing and the current equipment. Is difficult to be able to, to get to that. And I would be curious, and I'm not answering, asking you to answer that right now in this minute. But if, if we did, you know, another councilmember had mentioned about, you know, trying to meet that same standard. How much more staff would you need? How much more equipment would you need in order to accomplish that? I would be interested to see what that means and what, what's the bill on that if we decided to go down that route? And do that, go the exact reverse of what you're, what you're talking about. So I am interested in terms of the, you know, the, the, why accessibility isn't here in these, these project goals? And, and, and why just these five goals that you have here? So I was surprised that there weren't other, any other goals in terms of, you know, service excellency or that kind of thing. And I mean, I suppose it's sorted in here, but, because I know that we, we've gotten lots of awards on the other things that we, we do. So, you know, maybe that's just something we're, we're not staffed to do. So I was just, some other things that, you know, I just wondered about that with that. I'll move on. So in terms of the, the operationalized and the injuries, because that's certainly something that is kind of new. I didn't understand we had injuries that were, that were taking place. Was there any, you know, just the, the sheer interest in doing this work? Was there any, you know, looking into just privatizing this? What would we lose? I'm not a big privatizer, but I want at least, since, since it's not a very desirable thing. Was that looked at? Is it, is it more cost effective to do that? Would we not, would we lose on the quality side of the argument? I know we've done that on some other things. We've ended up having to bring it in-house because the quality is in there. Could you talk a little bit about that?
Certainly. Mayor, councilmember Loman, councilmembers? We have looked at, at contracts. And the last time we visited this as a city was 2010. And at that time, we did have a mix of contractors and I believe only four sidewalk plows. And the routes were in the 50 or 60 mile range with a contractor. And we just had trouble with contractors being successful. These machines are expensive to own, expensive to operate. The contractors had equipment breakdowns. They used the wrong machines. It just was a, a huge struggle. Eventually, we couldn't find anybody to bid on it. So they have some of the same experiences we do doing this on a large scale that bite off more than you can chew.
Thank you for that response. And I, I hope that as we're looking at these project goals, that we think about that as well. That we, we, you know, constantly, I mean, it doesn't, we don't have to enumerate everything, but I just, I'm thinking about that as I look at that. And then, you know, as we look at the 13 mile reduction, the thing that I'm concerned about is what the impact is to the schools. And you've mentioned a solution to that around churches and other synagogues and that type of thing. These, those places where folks gather, you know, any other kind of recreation places where people are, are part of. I'm concerned about that. If they tend to fall, if any of those things fall outside of that, I would be concerned about that. I hope that there'd be a plan that would, would be able to address that. Grocery stores, that type of thing. Most of those are, are going to be on, on main, main types of things. So I just got a couple more things here and then I'll, I'll, I'll turn it back for the good of the, the time here. So I know that, you know, the cities that we picked, I imagine the reason why we picked those is those are our peer cities that we've kind of used in our surveys. And I, and I'm just curious and I'm not trying to compare us to Minneapolis and St. Paul, Lloyd. I always say that Minneapolis, St. Paul are, are biggest suburbs because I'm, I'm so proud of Bloomington. But you know, if we were to do a comparison, what does that look like? What are they doing in Minneapolis and St. Paul, you know, those major cities? How, how are they handling snow plowing? Obviously, they have a larger downtown region and that type of thing. What do they do in their residential areas? Was any, anything done with that?
And if I could, I think the answer is nothing.
Okay. And, and I think, and I do think that's important to, to, to bring that to light. I think that's an important part of, of this conversation. Because you know, here I'm looking at these other suburban areas, they're, they're doing stuff. But if we are more like Minneapolis and St. Paul, maybe that's another question. So that kind of, you know, that's on the opposite side where I feel uncomfortable about that. But I, I just, that's the question I have because I, I want to know, you know. I mean, that's where I put our city as more of those categories is where we're heading. So.
If I could, Mayor, councilmember Loman, you were spot on, Mayor. The, the cities of Minneapolis and St. Paul take care of the sidewalks adjacent to public property. And every other property owner is responsible. I think one of the significant differences that's worth acknowledging is that most people in Minneapolis have a sidewalk and it's not the same in Bloomington. So there is that difference. And we did hear the, some of that through the engagement, you know, that's an obvious difference, I guess. For, for residents. So, thank you.
Well, well, thank you for bringing it this far. The last thing I would say here is, you know, you know. I'll just take a little twist on this. I, my, my colleague had talked about trying to expand, you know, who we, we talked to. And I think for me, it's not so much, you know, certainly we've been down this pathway in terms of, you know, trying to get people to show up. And it's, it's very difficult to get folks engaged until you put the snow plow there or you put the, you know, you know, put the equipment there and say, oh, we're going to do this now. Oh, wow. So I, I think more so what I'm interested in is to try to see if there's new ways in which, you know. You know, I've said this a million times before, there's, we can try to engage different people. And I do know our engagement, our department does a phenomenal job at trying to find new and creative ways to, to engage. You know, our, you know, different folks that are out there that are going to be impacted by this. And that's the thing I'm mostly concerned is making sure we're hearing from those voices of those people who we typically don't hear from. To make sure that we get this policy in the policy project goals that we have. So it, it makes, makes sense. And so if I were to look at these project goals, I would move up in here, just my own, my one councilmember. You know, equity and also accessibility. I think those have got to be somewhere, you know, in, in, in terms of how we look at this. You know, 13 miles, I think is, is great, but you know, maybe that gets, you know, maybe there's, we, we trade some of those, those miles off. For some of the other areas where we would be able to meet those five, you know, those five goals that are here and the other two that I propose. And I would probably feel a little more comfortable with making this, making this judgment. Thank you for what we've gotten thus far.
For the comments.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Mua and then councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Mua?
Thank you, Mayor. I think I'm going to be in the minority in this one. I'm very happy to see this work come forward. And also Kevin, I think this is your first time presenting in front of council. You're doing a great job, man. Appreciate it. I have lived in six different Midwest cities. I'm a Midwest boy. Only in Bloomington do we do this. Nowhere else. I've never seen it. Everyone else, if it's on your, if it abuts your property, it runs in front of your house, runs inside of your house. You as the property owner are responsible for it. We have written in our city code that that's what is supposed to happen. I remember growing up, like my dad took pride, like the snow's coming. Come on, guys, get out there, guys, plow and shovel our driveway. Get a plow and shovel our sidewalks. And when I have an elderly neighbor who can't get out there, guess who was doing it? From the age of five until I moved out of my parents' house, I was out there shoveling my neighbor's driveway because she couldn't do it. So I'm thinking and looking and considering this. And Bloomington loves to do this thing where we set up our ordinances and then we say, oh, we could do a little more, we could do a little more. And all of a sudden, it doesn't follow the ordinance anymore. All of a sudden, we're spending $60,000 a year more. Because we have lawn repair, because we have workers comps, because we have to do considerably more just to plow a driveway or a sidewalk. When it's the responsibility of the homeowner. And so to break us out of this cycle where we continue to add more and more to our list of to-dos. This is something that we have to stop. And it's not because I don't care about residents. It's not because I don't care about seniors. It's because it's the expectation of the city that we do everything. And then our taxes are sky high and you're wondering why our taxes are so high. Every $60,000 bill that we have here adds up. And so the more that we can reduce, the more that we can share with the community, the more that we can build this together. The more efficient our community becomes, the more we build connections in our communities. I mean, I, I, this winter, I literally, I went to a Burger King because I was like, I'm hungry. I gotta get something for lunch. I gotta get back to a meeting. I ran into one of our sidewalks and the plow operators. He was a young guy, literally looked exhausted. He said, I've been up since 2:00 AM. This thing rocks me around everywhere. My back hurts. And he's like 22. So to care and say we care about our staff and then say you can continue to do this until you literally, your back gives out. What does that say about the values that we have as a city? What does it say about us when it snows six inches and no one bothers to go outside and help their neighbors clear their sidewalks? No one bothers to go check in on anybody. If I see my neighbor hasn't cleared their snow or their sidewalk in 24 hours, guess who's knocking on their door and making sure everything's okay? It's me. And so I'm looking at this and says, not only is this a use of city funds that could be better used somewhere else. But how can we better develop the community connections that we used to have? I remember being a kid and we used to always have that. Doesn't matter if you were 90 or, or five years old. Everyone's helping each other when weather events happen. And we live in the Midwest. We know snow happens. It is not a surprise. And so I'm really excited to see this come forward, to see the city take a step back and stop doing everything. So that we actually can take something off the levy. And my recommendation, I would love to see us even get rid of the major collectors. If it doesn't have a boulevard, okay, I get it. Walking on those sidewalks and right next to the street with nothing to, to, to be a buffer for you is terrifying. I feel terrified seeing kids walk down those roads. I would support continuing to plow those sidewalks that abut right up next to the road. But if it's got a boulevard on it, I want to get rid of it because it's the homeowner's responsibility. It's our responsibility to take care of each other in our community. And then it's our responsibility fiscally to find any savings that we can and return it back to our taxpayers. To get to a place where we can actually provide services that meet what residents are, are looking for. And I'll be honest, I try to beat you guys out to my sidewalk every time it snows. I just do a much better job at it. I can clear my neighbors in a much faster way than you can. Because it goes up, it, it turns into an ice rink. And so my neighbors who have dogs, who walk their dogs, like it's just not safe for them. So we talk about walkability. That's part of it too. So my long rant to say, I'm excited to see this happen. I'm excited for us to reset those expectations and get back to community building where we help each other out and not just say, hey, the city can do this. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of quick questions first. In other cities where people are shoveling a lot of their sidewalks, do we have any idea of the compliance rates? I don't know about all of them. I do know there's in Minneapolis, if you don't do it and the city has to come do it, you get charged for it. So they must have some metrics, but I don't know if they do in other cities, the peer communities you looked at. So do we know how well people are doing about being good neighbors?
So Mayor, councilmember Nelson, remember the other councilmembers? We didn't get too much feedback. We contacted a couple specifically because we had contacts within those cities. And their numbers weren't too high. We understand that would be a, we'd be taking resources away from sidewalk plowing. So we would need some resources for enforcement. But our belief and understanding from those other cities is that the compliance far outweighs the outliers who don't clear their sidewalk. And like councilmember Mua said, like, a lot of people are like, oh, they didn't get through it in time. I'll get their sidewalk real quick. When we were at the park commission, Chairman Minks mentioned, he's like, I like to do my side, I like to do my driveway and then I'll go do my neighbors too because I just enjoy it. During our engagement, a lot of guys were saying, oh, yeah, I raced down the sidewalk just to get done before my neighbors do. So it's a concern of ours about enforcement, but we're also anxious, as Dave said. First year, we're not looking to find anybody. It's going to be focused on education and making sure everybody understands what we're, our expectations are. And then just ensuring that it's a collaborative effort.
Sounds good. So I'll probably just send an email to Sa and Jonathan and let them know my address. You probably haven't seen my driveway. In terms of the savings, we talked about yard repairs. Do we have an idea of what that costs us per year? You said we had about 80 this year that we'll have to repair. And I will also echo a comment. I forget who made that. I used to receive calls about this every spring and I don't think I have for a couple of years. Which I assume means you guys are on top of it, getting out there right away and, and, and taking, you kind of have an idea where things went overall. So appreciate that proactive behavior, not just waiting for a call and otherwise whatever, it's your problem. So, but is there a cost assessment to that?
So Mayor, councilmember Nelson, other councilmembers? So we are tracking that right now for this winter. So we have a time entry code. I don't have the data right now and we're not completely done with all of it. But we're having our staff enter their time accordingly and we should be able to have that number pulled out from our other data. Our other wages and benefits. So to have something like that, we anticipate it being asked.
That sounds really good. Just in terms of my thoughts. In general, I, I'm supportive of this. My biggest concern is when I look at costs, I look at costs as a whole. And I understand that this saves the city money. What I don't know is that it saves residents money. If, what I think it does is consolidate the cost to just fewer people. And I think those costs ultimately are much higher. If you take into account what, you know, various neighborhoods will have to do to pay somebody. How many people will have to have their, whoever plows their driveway, add shoveling services to it. I mean, I, I asked for a quote and nobody. quote, and nobody will plow my driveway, but that's a different problem. But to shovel it was, you know, it was a couple hundred dollars, you know? And if we have that for multiple people that, you know, get somebody to do theirs, we're just putting that burden on fewer people. And ultimately, I'm concerned that the cost is even higher to the community of, of us not providing. We can actually provide this service at a lower cost to the entire community. And to a certain extent, sidewalks are part of our network, just like our roads and things like that. And they're a community asset. Like, I can walk on the sidewalk in front of your house and you can't tell me not to. You might want to, but, you know, I, I have the right to do that. There, there are community asset. And so I, I do struggle with that, that we're going to actually increase not only the cost to a few people, but incre- increase the cost overall in order to maintain community assets. And so, that's not a really great answer. I'm just trying to give some feedback here on kind of the two thoughts in my mind. Because I do agree with my colleague, Councilmember Mua, about, you know, taking care of your neighbor and taking care of your yard. And, and it sounds like, you know, it works in other communities and they do take care of it and, and all that. My only question is, at what overall cost to that community? And is this way a lower cost way of doing it? And I don't have a great answer to that. Just, that's the question in my mind. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. So I have a couple of questions. So you said the feedback from the school district was that they would not be able to take care of those sidewalks. Did they give any other feedback or was that primarily?
Mayor, Councilmember Carter, City Council, that was one big takeaway that we got. And just to be clear on that, they were talking about if there were low volume residential roads adjacent to their schools, they would not have the resources to keep those clear. So we got that out of them. And, and then, of course, they looked at this as a service reduction and this, you know, they were in no way in favor of that for their walking students. We asked questions around, so they know how many kids would live in, in an area that wasn't served by busing. But they didn't know what percentage of them would be dropped off to school. We tried to look at, well, we know on snow days that more people drop kids off, but they have no way of knowing whether those kids were supposed to walk or they just, to all the way to school or walk to the bus stop. So those are the kinds of things we talked about and got.
And so then, we, the decision was then if we were to move forward with this approach that we would continue to take care of those sidewalks. And you said it was an additional, I think, five miles for the sidewalks adjacent to the schools. So that's total. But what does that mean for just like the distance around the school? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Was it just like literally the sidewalks around the building?
Yep.
Okay.
That would go back to them as the adjacent property owner.
Okay.
They don't have the staff or the equipment at the schools and it would cost them, frankly, taxpayer money to invest in that and staff up for it and equip. And for five miles, it would be something we could.
Okay.
Add in.
So then we, so we would be plowing those. But if there were any other, like I'm thinking about Washburn and has Xerxes, right? Like, we would do around Washburn Elementary, right, right now elementary, not future elementary, but, but not Xerxes, which students might use to walk to that school.
Perhaps. I don't have.
Xerxes is red on the map.
Okay.
So I would assume no, then we wouldn't be plowing, right?
Correct.
Okay. And then I know that there are some places on this map that are marked red and the routes are bus routes. So would we still plow the bus stops? Or would those just not be plowed? So I'm thinking about like College View. One side is black, so it would be plowed by us, but the other side is red and has bus stops on it.
Metro Transit bus stops? We didn't consider those in, in this project.
Okay.
To be honest with you.
Okay, that would be one concern I would have is just, especially, yeah, yeah. So that would be a concern that I have is bus stop locations. And, I mean, I know, I know we've heard about those over the years, too, just not getting plowed and who's responsible and all that. And then, again, I'm just like using College View as the example. So one side again is black, so we would be plowing that. The other side is red and there's sidewalks, but it's like, it's people's backyards, the fence, and then it's the sidewalk. So those people, it would be their responsibility to plow that sidewalk?
Mayor, Councilmember Carter, that may have been a hiccup in the.
Okay.
System there. It was, I was staring at GIS for extended time as I was making these maps.
And so, and, I mean, there are just probably like spots like that where I'm just like, well, why? Like, what do we, you know?
That is one of the things we look at was, does it go along the side of their houses? Is it in their backyard? So things like 90th Street over near the high school field, 90th and Penn near there, where it's in their backyards. That was one of the things that were brought up, like, you're expecting me to lug a snow blower around the block just to go do FTE? And we're like, no, like, we're not expecting anything. We just want feedback. So that's, let's take into account. That's a quick adjustment I can make.
Okay. Yeah, I would just say maybe do like once over, a once over of the map, just to like get rid of any of those. Because that was, I mean, a couple of the spots I was like, ooh, those people are going to have to plow those sidewalks. Like, that doesn't seem quite fair. So thank you for clarifying that. I will say, like, when I found out that our ordinance was actually that we do not plow residential, like private sidewalks, but that we actually do, I was kind of confused by that. And as somebody who I don't have a sidewalk, we don't have sidewalks in my neighborhood. So I was like, wait, so I'm paying to have sidewalks plowed that are private in other parts of the city? Like, that doesn't, do you know what I mean? Like, it doesn't seem totally fair. However, of course, I see the value in having all the sidewalks plowed for all of the reasons that we've talked about tonight. So my mind has shifted on that. But kind of in my mind, the reason that we were going down this path was to have our ordinance in alignment with our practices. And then also, I mean, we're looking for all kinds of ways to save money, right? Because we have this looming tax levy as Councilmember Mua talked about. And so I am in general supportive. I do have concerns about, around, about the roads around schools, especially as we have worked hard to improve safety around schools for kids to walk and bike to school. And then also bus stops. So there might just be some areas that need to be looked at again. But those would be my comments.
Thank you. Very good. You got enough there to work with?
That's a lot. I took notes, I think.
Good work.
Hey, Mayor.
Good work.
Say, Mayor.
Councilmember Rebus, turn on your microphone. Thank you.
I mean, you mentioned about $50,000 to $60,000 and a half FTE in savings. And I correct on that? What was that about?
Councilmember Rebus, Mayor, councilmembers, the $50,000 to $60,000 was in equipment costs of repair, maintenance, fuel. That was on that. I did not put a dollar figure to the hours, the 925 hours.
And the half FTE was in relation to the repairs?
No.
Performing the equipment? What was, what was that about?
That was if we had our routes at 13 miles and didn't spend that additional time plowing sidewalks. What would we do instead of spending all that time plowing sidewalks? Kevin did all the math on it and, and came up with the number of 925 hours of staff time that would not be spending, we would not spend plowing sidewalks if we implemented this map. And then that equates to roughly a half of an FTE. So full-time employment is 2,080 hours. So we're about 1,000.
Thanks for the clarification. I do have one comment. You know, it sounded kind of, and, and to me, is irrelevant. I paid for my side, my driveway to be plowed. And I can tell you, I paid $1,400 for the season to get it done. And the reason I started doing it is because I was having a hard time when the plow goes by and left all the ice chunks in the driveway. I couldn't barely move them. So I started paying for that. It's a lot of money for a resident to pay for that. For somebody on a fixed income, they wouldn't be able to afford it, I'm, I'm assuming. But I, I don't know. If you have a lot of a 401K saved when you retire, you can probably do that, I guess. But that said, though, it sounded really bad when you mentioned that you had time to go to an ice rink and clean it for people. That doesn't sound very attractive to the public, you know, that you're going to make time to go clean up an ice rink while they're going to have to do their sidewalk. So, you know, and that's just for the public, okay? It really doesn't bother me one bit, one way or the other. But I, it just, that doesn't make any sense to a lot of people to hear that. That's all I got. But thank you. I mean, it's a lot of work that you have put into this. And I, you know, to a certain degree, I agree. I will have to pay to do it because I don't really care to do it. It used to be fun when I was young, but not anymore. But thank you. I, I know you put a lot of time into this. And, you know, if it works, great. If it doesn't, but I, I totally don't support it. I'm sorry to say that, but I don't. I totally disagree with it. Thank you.
Councilmember Carter, you had a clarifying question?
Yeah, just clarifying. So we had the, the savings, the $60,000 in savings from the equipment and maintenance and fuel. And then there was like $11,000 in overtime. And then it sounds like you'll have more information for us on the cost savings for just like property damage and all of that, which I imagine is going to be pretty substantial. And would there be anything else that you can think of? Those are, that's probably the one missing cost savings. But, okay. I just wanted to clarify and make sure that that was correct.
Councilmember Lowman?
Thank you. Just one really quick question. Do we plow the trails across the city?
Mayor, Councilmember Lowman, City Council, yes. That is not included in this. Those are the wide bituminous trails. We plow those with a pickup and different equipment. So that's another 30 or 40 miles.
On top of that?
Of, that's different. That's not part of this.
Okay.
This discussion.
Thank you. I just, I wanted to just get that clear in my mind. We, we, we plow the, the trails that are, that are out there. So like, for example, Normandale would be a trail, right?
Yeah. Yeah. Good question. And we can, we can work to clarify that and maybe add that into like some details on.
Yeah, the only reason why I, I asked that is, and I'll just say is that's part of my equity question. Because I know, you know, different parts of the city have different things. And so that's really where my question is. So we've got an expectation around that we plow that, we do that, those 30 miles. And that would be quite, be curious about how, how other cities handle that as well. Thanks.
Also a clarifying question. So the folks who do the plowing, they're park maintenance employees. Is that correct? So they're, they're not public works employees. They're park maintenance employees.
Mayor, City Council, yes. Well, there's, there's, there's a mix. But the majority of the sidewalk plow routes are staffed by park maintenance.
Park maintenance.
Employees. And we do get some help from utilities and other, other.
Okay.
Other departments as we can, but.
Very good. All right. So you'll be back before us in July. You'll be back with the park and then the City Council in July. You're going to continue to get feedback on a variety of different ways about this proposal moving forward. And then we'll, I'm assuming it's going to be a public hearing in July as we, as we amend the ordinance and kind of hammer all through this. And then we'll figure it out from there. All right. Gentlemen, thanks much. Appreciate it tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks. Council, because we jumped ahead and actually did item 5.2 earlier, we have reached the end of our agenda this evening. And I would now entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lowman, second by Councilmember Carter to adjourn this evening. No further council discussion on this. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 6-0, and we are adjourned. Thank you, Council, for the discussion tonight. Thanks to staff. Thanks to everybody who joined us this evening. Appreciate it. Everybody have a great rest of your week. Thanks.